The Town of Abington zoning vote of appeals will hold its public meeting at Town Hall on Thursday, August 10th, 2023 at 7:01 PM. We're going to start with old business. We're gonna welcome our new zoning board of appeals administrative assistant, David Rosenberg.
Welcome, David.
Thank you for having me. Great to be here.
Uh, the second thing on our, on our agenda is we're gonna do the acknowledgement that we all received the clerk's notice from the trial court of Massachusetts, the Superior Court, case number, case name, 155 Birch Street, Abington LLC, Sean J. Reynolds, resident agent versus Abington Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Abington. Uh, this was time stamped in the town clerk's office, uh, July 31st, 2023, at 12:34 PM, and it was emailed to the zoning board on the same day, 7:31, 2023. And then we're gonna move on to, we have-
Could we ask one question on that? Now, uh, could we just get a idea? I've never seen one of these before. Is there any way we could get an idea of what this exactly means for us?
Uh, well, right now, the town clerk stamped the, um, the, uh, the clerk, it's a clerk's notice saying that motion to vacant judge and dismissal allowed. So they're, they're continuing onward. Amy has it, and she'll let us know when, um, the board needs to get involved.
Okay, so it's going to court, correct? Okay.
At this point in time, yes.
All right, very good. I just never got one of those before. I just wanted to make sure. Go ahead, Chairman.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the July 13th, 2023 meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I recommend that we pass over these until our next meeting because one of our chairman is missing.
Okay.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Table that till the next meeting. All right, it's still 7:03, so our first, uh, piece of business starts at 7:05, so we'll give the public a few more minutes to go on it.
Did you want to read this?
I'd be happy to.
Come on, don't you?
Be happy to.
There you have the same thing.
All right, it's, uh, 7:05 now.
Okay, uh, moving on to the agenda, 7:05, we'll go to our first, um, piece of business. Continuation, um, from last month's meeting of the petition of Tomahjin Real Estate LLC, 500 Victory Road, Quincy, Mass., for special permit 175-21A to allow a conversion of existing residential property into a six-unit residential condominium at 657 Bedford Street, Abington. The property is located on Accessors Map 46, Lot 20, in the HZ zone. Um, we had a, a letter mailed to us, and Rich is gonna read it into-
Bob's gonna read it.
Oh, Bob, sorry, he's gonna read it into the record.
Received on August 23rd, uh, 2023 at 8:46 AM from Bill Mullen at 25 Block Street. "Mr. Chairman, I'm running to express my concerns regarding the proposed project at 657 Bedford Street. While housing is needed in Abington, the housing is allowed in the highway commercial zone with a special permit. I feel the proposal is not keeping with quote-unquote 'the neighborhood.' Technically, the applicant is, has enough land for the project to not exceed the percentage of lot coverage. However, that is due to a strip of trees that the applicant's attorney continues to reference as the forest, which is the best stretch definition of, of the word. So while the strip of trees would allow them to be compliant with the lot coverage regulation, it allows the actual project that might be more congested. Looking at the scale of the plants shown to allow closed buildings really are, are to each other, the board members, as you know, that when the project is built, it will look even more congested. While there may be some commercial residences in the particular area, there are none, to my knowledge, that are multiple buildings, which again lends to the visual appearance of being congested and just cram into the lot. The applicant's attorney, uh, his opening statement mentioned that the proposal was constructed by a company that was designed and built to Quincy Bay Marina, who are known for quality work and property management. That may be true, but this is a condo project. Once the project's completed and sold, the applicant will not have anything to do with the ongoing upkeep. Certainly, the special part, permit is a lower threshold than the variance, but is not guaranteed stamp of approval. Housing may be needed in the town, but this project, in my opinion, does not fit well with the area of the lot as it's posed on. I urge you to reject the application, and I have the applicant come back with a more cohesive plan. Thank you for your time and consideration, again, respectively, Bill Mullen, 25 Block.
Um, Mr. Vice Chair, I gave a copy of the, um, letter to Attorney Riley.
Okay, thank you. All righty.
For the record, again, my name is Attorney Sean Riley, opposite 500 Washington Street, Abington Center, and this, as you mentioned, is a continued hearing from last month. Uh, is the special permit under 175-21A. Uh, as I won't go over in a lot of detail what we already did last month. But as you know, this project has already received site plan approval, and as part of site plan approval, the town engineer reviewed the stormwater drainage system, which there is no stormwater management on this site now, and we are going to implement it. Um, we also reviewed the lighting plan, which, um, conforms to all of our lighting by law. The landscape plan, which exceeds the requirement of our by law. Parking, which exceeds the by law. We have no variances needed. We comply with all setbacks, and where we are not allowed to exceed more than 60% lot coverage, we are actually at 41% lot coverage. So we conform with all the dimensional requirements of our zoning by law. I respect Mr. Mullen's letter, but I would note that he is not in the butter, nor is in the butter within 300 feet. But the abutters who were here last week expressed their, their, their direct abutters, they live right behind this project, they expressed their support for this project and wanted it to be, uh, in, uh, to move forward because we would be putting a drainage system in which would further protect the abutting properties. So for the record, um, the Fraziers were here in support as direct abutters. Uh, the board had mentioned a concern about density, and wanted to look into that. So I, I also looked into it for you, or for me, I guess, but I wanted to give you some information to consider.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So density is basically how many units per lot area, per square foot. And I, Mr. Mullen mentioned he didn't know of any multifamilies in the immediate area. I'm surprised he said that because right across the street is a multifamily, and two buildings down is a multifamily, and that's the subject of this memo. Um, our property is .85 acres. Across the street at 670 Bedford Street, it's .84 acres, and two buildings down is .83 acres at 707 Bedford Street. We're proposing six units on .85 acres. Across the street is 24 units on .84 acres, and two buildings down is 18 units on .83 acres. Basically, the same sized lot, but one of them has four times as much density as this proposal, and the other one has three times as much density as this proposal. So this proposed density is nowhere near what already exists in the neighborhood, and it's on Route 18, a state highway. The intention of multifamily housing being encouraged and allowed in the highway commercial zone as a special permit is because those highways are designed to accept the traffic. And there has been no issues of traffic. Mass Highway has approved the curb cut. They wouldn't if they thought it was a traffic issue. The fire department has been working with us from day one on this project, and helped us design the driveway, the parking areas, uh, and we're fully supportive, and I want to thank them for all of their cooperation. So density really is not an issue here. You can't really speak to any of the surrounding properties. There is ledgeless property, um, and I know that some people say, oh, we're giving away a commercial property to residential, which of course, it is true that the town does need more residential, the entire state needs more residential. So to ignore that need, I would, you know, somewhat of a fallacy, I think we need to recognize in that this house has been sitting here for years and years and years, and to sell it as a single-family house is simply not feasible. There's not a big market to buy a single-family house on a state highway. But I would like to also give you some more information.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Attorney.
Thank you, Sean. Just to kind of support your approval of this special permit, I compared similar-sized commercial properties on this area of Route 18, and a lot of people say, hey, you're giving up commercial tax base, you're giving up those taxes. If you compare and look what actually the taxes would be on this proposal versus the existing taxes on other similar properties, 170 Bedford Street, Health Express, 446, which is the former Shaughnessy's Rental, 538 Bedford Street, Old Town Real Estate, 604 Bedford Street, which is the, I call it the Schaefer Building. It's the one that's right next door to Independence Insurance, and then our property, 657 Bedford Street. All of those properties are between 31,000 and 43,000 square feet. Health Express is the one that generates the most taxes, at 17,800. The other ones range from 6,700 to 11,400 per year. If we would have built this, these six units, and if you would assume an assessed valuation of 350,000 per unit, which is the average assessment of condominiums outside, townhouse condominiums, our tax revenue from this property would be $31,962. If you want to assume it's a $400,000 valuation, which some people would because of recent valuations, valuations and price escalations, the tax revenue to be generated by this proposal of only six units is $36,528. So there is no loss of tax revenue by approving this project. There is no setting a precedent of, of, uh, extreme density issues because right across the street, it's four times as dense, and right down the street, two buildings down, it's three times as dense. We satisfy all the requirements of a special permit. We don't overload traffic, we don't overload drainage, we don't overload water or sewer, we don't create light trespass. The fire department has approved this, the town engineer has approved this, the planning board has approved this. And given the information I've submitted to you, I personally don't see any reason, any reason to deny the special permit to allow this investment in Abington to proceed. Yes, they are a quality builder. We should be welcoming a quality builder. Yes, they will sell the condominium unit, but that's what we want because it's ownership. It's an association that has obligations, monthly fees to maintain the property. So it is a good investment on a piece of property that is in the appropriate zone. We ask you to approve the special permit. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for him?
You? No? I'm good. Well, I still look at this and see that it's, it's congested. I still look at it as, um, number four, the, the requests used for desire to the public convenience and welfare. I still look at this property and I see that you just made, made enough room to put six in here. That's it, that's all you can get in. I mean, you, it's basically pushing the limits of this piece of property. This is not a three-acre lot. You've got, you've got, uh, you're squeezing everything together, and, and Bill does have some good, good reasons. Uh, he's been on the board before, he's seen projects before. And I do look at this, and I see exactly what he's talking about. Yes, you, you do just barely make it on the bylaws. Yes, you do. But you are also squeezing this property, you're putting six condos in there. And, and, and it's one of those, I, you drive by it right now, and you, you wonder what it's gonna look like because it looks so tight. You know, our job here is to make sure that, as a zoning board, not to, uh, congest an area, congest a piece of property. And to me, this looks like it's congested.
Well, I would dispute your summary there that we just comply. We comply with all the dimensional setbacks.
I realize that, but you just comply.
But that's, if we comply, we comply.
But our job here is-
If we didn't, excuse me, if we didn't comply, you'd have a reason to deny it. But it's hard to deny something that you comply with. We comply with the zoning by law. Let me finish. The, this property has more green space than the two that I mentioned that have the other multifamilies nearby. Go down the street-
Well, those were built in what, 1960, 19 whatever?
But you're, you're just ignoring the fact that we have a 40-foot, uh, deep front lawn. We have, let me, let me mention again, it's in the written materials that I already submit to you. 28 arborvitae trees, 11 maple trees, 94 shrubs, including inkberry rhododendron-
I got that, I got it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a living forest.
It's gonna be attractive, and, and there's room, you have to have room to plant all those trees, and we do. We have extra parking spaces, um, which, you know, is a good thing. We have garage spaces for New England. We comply every, in every way, and we try to make it attractive. We put the buildings to the rear, so when you drive by, the first thing you're gonna see is the front lawn and the maple trees. The arborvitae's going down the side. New fencing, and again, we'll reiterate, reiterate, the only abutters that came here were in support of this project.
Right.
And I, to frankly, to deny it, to say it, I can't imagine what it will look like, is somewhat arbitrary and capricious. I've laid out everything in here and gave you every easy one.
But it is a congested, uh, you're making a congested, uh, piece of property.
It is not congested. It is not congested in any way.
It's squeezed in. I mean, you get six, you've got six condos squeezed in on a small piece of property. You gotta go with a one-way street just so you could get by that. And then on top of that, on top of that, you, you snow storage is at the back of the, of the, of the land where it's gonna go into other people's property.
No, that's not true.
It's not true?
Absolutely not true.
But you're gonna have piles of snow on the backside of the-
The snow storage areas were shown on the site plan.
I see them.
The town engineer went over that. We have multiple snow storage areas, and of course, it's in the back because the plow enters from the street and pushes it to the rear. We intentionally leave space between the pavement and the fence for snow storage in multiple areas. But one-way driveway was something that we worked out with the fire department. The initial driveway wasn't one-way. It became a better, safer way that they liked, we liked, and it's there. So it's not something we had to do, it's something we worked out through the site plan approval process. So everything here, the assumptions you're making-
This is not the first, this is not the first plan, correct? What's this, the third one?
The first one had more units, had different layout, and we've been working with this over a year to satisfy everything in the zoning by law so there were no variances. We comply with all setbacks in order to create yard space. We create more parking as required than our parking by law, and we're putting in drainage where it doesn't exist now.
So that first unit doesn't have any indoor parking, right?
Correct, the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you had put indoor parking, would that have put you over the limit?
Over what limit?
The, uh, the fill for the lot.
The fill?
Uh-
Sorry, the po, the number of parking spaces?
No, the, uh, just the, how much of the space, uh, drawing plan.
No, we, I'm not really-
The open space.
Yeah, the open space, the 40 percent, yeah. Yeah.
No, I don't follow you, I'm sorry.
So I'm just wondering why that one unit doesn't have parking, like-
Because it's an existing structure that doesn't have parking below. The new structure is a townhouse style, which has parking on it. It's a beneficial thing for, in New England, when people buy a house and looking for the, uh, looking for the garage.
Yeah.
Um, you can't lift the house to put parking under it, you'd have to build a garage, like-
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you wouldn't build a garage for it, like off to the side?
No, it has its two, it has dedicated parking spaces, uh, within walking distance of the house, much as it does now.
So, um, this plan is the plan, that's it. There's no, can be any changes, if there are gonna be any changes, do you come back in front of us?
He comes back to the, he has to go back to the planning board if there was any plans to the site plan, and if it's anything that affected the special permit, yes, certainly, they would have to come back here.
Again, I, I feel that this is, this is, this is six buildings put into a very small area. Yes, you do hit all the, caution, you hit all the bylaws, I get that. But to me, I worry about the safety of, you know, general welfare of people who are gonna buy the properties.
We do too.
Again, all you, all you need is one person to screw up on this, and everyone's, uh, you know, they can't get out of their house, they can't, um, a truck comes in and, and breaks down or something, something happens. I mean-
You could say that in any condominium or any commercial development, someone breaks down in the driveway-
This is a real tight property.
Yeah, again, it's not, the driveway width complies with the zoning bylaws. It's actually wider in areas intentionally. The parking is more, and I want to correct you, it's not six buildings, it's three buildings, six units.
Six units, correct, yeah. Anybody else have anything else? No. So there's no way of changing, making it small, right? No way around that?
My client owns the property, he abides by the zoning by laws, there's no need to. We went through this with the zoning, with the planning board, but I think we had seven units to start, and there were reasons to delete that seventh unit, to get it down to compliance and to make it work, to get the building separation, to get more green space, and we went through all of that. What you see in front of you has been thoroughly vetted from the town engineer, the planning board, and I know the planning board is a different board, but this is a special permit only. And a special permit, uh, um, to demonstrate the special permit, which is a much lower threshold than a, uh, variance, is do we overload water, sewer, traffic? No. Do we comply with dimensional setbacks? Do we comply with lot coverage? Yes. Is there a need in the community? Certainly. I think we have checked off every box, and we've, if we haven't met everything, we've exceeded everything.
But also, I mean, there is, in part of that, one, two, three, four, five, the request has to be desirable for the public convenience and welfare.
Hmm?
Does this board think that this is, um, convenient, um, public, for the public welfare?
Or better yet, in what way is it not?
Well, our job is to make sure that property is not congested. I'll go back to what our job is as a zoning board. That is one of them. The one, one of the requirements and, and what they ask us to do is to make sure to prevent overcrowding of lands.
Right. Understood. And that's why it's designed the way it is. With all the setbacks, with all of the lawn area, all the trees, and the way it's designed is to make it a nice place to live and also to be a benefit to the abutters.
I think I've said everything I gotta say. You guys can talk. Want to make a decision, or?
Yeah.
Did you want to over up to the-
Yeah, I was just going to. Anything else you want to say?
No, I'm good.
Take a minute, open and see if there's any, uh, other comments from the public. Anyone here that'd like to speak on this? All right, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion? Oh, actually-
Mr. Vice Chair, can you, um, just mention the voting members tonight?
Oh. Yeah, so we have, um, Richard Peterson is out tonight, so the voting members will be David Commerford, uh, Robert Manning, and Richard Negrell. Do we have, you guys, anything else you guys want to say before we do the vote?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, the petition from Tomahjin Real Estate LLC at 500 Victory Road, Mass. for a special permit, uh, 675-21-A to allow conversion of existing residential property into a six-unit residential condominium. Uh, before I do that, I just have one last thing. It's a single-family home in five units, correct? Is, is the, is the single-family home considered a condominium?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So there'll, just to be clear, there'll be six condominium units.
Okay, I just want to clarify that in my brain. At 65 Bedford Street, the property located in Accessors Map 46, Lot 20, in the HZ zone.
Can I suggest you add per the plan submitted?
I was just gonna say that.
Uh, per the plan submitted and within whatever special, was there a special-
In accordance with the site plan-
Site plan has submitted.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Was it second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here, the second, of course.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, let's move on to our next order of business. Uh, the Town of Abington zoning vote of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 10th, 2023, at 7:10 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Linnwood Way, Abington, on the petition of Jonathan C. Brace, uh, for a variance under 17, uh, 175-29 to allow for a side setback from 20 to 15, and for a rear setback from 30 to 28 for a proposed two-car garage with a second-floor master suite attached to the existing house. Assumed, the property is located at 39 King Street, on the Accessors Map 15, Lot 111, in residential, uh, 30 zone. Do we have someone here who's gonna speak on that? Could you just state your name and address for the record?
Hey, evening, uh, my name is Jonathan Brace, um, I reside at 39 King Street. Uh, it's my petition that went in for. Um, my wife and I have lived here for about three and a half years. We bought the property in January 2020. Um, since then, we've had two daughters. Um, I've also had an application from my military service. So the master suite would have, should be have for a handicap bathroom. Um, so I don't have to remodel the existing ones because it'd be a little harder. Um, so we're hoping to put it on there. It's actually, we're like a foot and a half short on the back, and I think it's like 3.3 feet on the side. So, um, we're a kind of setback from the neighbors' structures, and, um, you know, I've talked to some of them, a little happens to be here tonight, but, uh, you know, to see if they would be okay with it as well, you know, and to make sure that we wouldn't be in a crutch or anything. It's woods behind us, so there's, there's nothing behind us except for about, um, quite a, quite a number of acres of woods. Um, and, uh, it really only affects the one property on the side. Um, you can see on the lower part of the, the map right there, um, and, uh, that's yard, like all the other structures, and all the other structures are in front of us. We're kind of grandfathered in behind. We were originally part of, um, the Doyle property up on the upper right, I guess, back in the eighties, before it was kind of broken down. So, um, I'm just here to answer any questions or, uh, you know.
Talk about a crazy place to put your house, huh?
Yeah, right.
All that property.
All that property, and they put it there, it must be wet back there then, right?
It was trees, so it was pretty much trees right up to that upper corner on the back there. Um, and, uh, we had a lot of them taken down so far, but, uh, yeah, it was, we had about 50 trees taken down, honestly. And, uh, to get back the yard and a little bit of, uh-
I saw, I saw the picture of, uh, you're up back there. Yeah, it's interesting setup.
Yeah, it was a 20-foot wall of thorns when we moved in on that corner.
Oh, really?
So, and there's a little shed on the side of it too as well, so, um, but you couldn't even get really from the shed to the house because of the overgrowth and everything else that we-
Definitely strange, uh-
It's at a weird angle, too.
Yeah, it's a low corridor.
Of the lot, yeah.
Yeah, it was straight and just a little over, it wasn't a problem at all, so.
Can you explain the, uh, the car path, uh, which takes up a good portion of the right side of the new proposed development?
Yeah, so the survey had a question about that, and we did as well. So that's actually like right in the middle of our driveway. And it's basically the borders are rock walls, and it looks like they used to be, um, in that corner where the car path goes up to, into the woods, um, that rock wall is actually open. It looks like where they used to drive, like the sheep and herds, like back hundreds of years ago. Um, I talked to the Sessions office, and they said that it's part of our property now, even though it's kind of listed separate. But, um, it is part of ours.
So the property line is to the right of that car path, then?
Um, technically, yes, but the car path is also a part of our property. I don't understand how it works with the two parts, but I, I do own the car path. Because that's what we were concerned about when the survey came out and did the setbacks and everything. Um, he was like, you just gotta find out about this car path because technically they do contest it. So I came up to the Sessions office, and they said it had been added to- He was like, you just got to find out about this car path because technically they do contest it, so I came up to the assessors office and they said it had been added to as part of our property line, so.
Well, it's good to know.
That, that, because that was considerable, the width of that car path was considerably reducing your distance between your property line and the addition.
Right.
And if, if that is now considered part of your property, that removes that almost to the two-foot, three-foot mark.
Yeah.
So that makes a huge difference.
Yeah, like where it comes down to King Street on the end, like that's pretty much the whole width of my driveway, like the driveway kind of curves up to meet the house.
Okay.
And the car path kind of stays off to the side and it's just grass there.
Are the doors on the, are the doors going to be on the end or on the front?
The doors are your garage, the garage, they'd be in the front, they'd be widened in the driveway by the house area, actually, there's a brick patio there already. So the patio would be getting excavated up and then they put the garage right there, it'd be attached, so, um, right now, like I have a, the lower entrance, the downstairs is finished, it's a split, split level. Or raised ranch, and I had to put in like a couple of little temporary ramps for when I'm in my wheelchair to go there, so they'd be going down and smoothing it all out, so I'd have like wheelchair access to the garage.
Okay.
And everything, and then there's going to be no access from the garage to the master suite above. You'd have to go, you have to go into that. And then they're going to put in a little electric chair lifting, little wheelchair server jerry up there.
You guys have any other questions?
So no in-law or anything, right?
No, it looks like the people that, before the people we bought the house from, they had the downstairs set up as kind of an in-law. But the Leonard's who we bought it from, they've been there seven years, like they had it set up as just a regular downstairs. And my wife works from home, I work from home two or three days a week, I'm the director of IT for Braintree Schools, and my wife works full remote, so like part of the bedroom would be part of our office too, to kind of get out of the rest of the house and give it to the girls for when they'd be babysitting everything. We have a three-month, three-year-old and a seven-month-old. And she, and she started talking more and I'm like.
And it's the move, that's for sure.
Yeah, we really like the property, we love our neighbors, we love the area, we both grew up in Rockland.
Yeah.
So like we don't really want to go, like you don't really find like a place that's like this in this area.
Oh, you won't, yeah.
Is the addition taller than the existing house?
A little bit, yes, because they get the clearance in the garage, they had to go up a little bit from like the existing floor plan for what the, to get that eight-foot clearance, I think, I believe it is for the garage, so it's like two or three feet taller. They'd be removing the chimney, there's a fireplace in the chimney, they'd be removing all of that, they'd be putting, there's like a little cutout there, that's like where they're running the radon and the natural gas exhaust and all that.
Do we have all the pictures of this, too?
I don't have the architecture.
Oh, you have that, okay, I just wanted to see these.
I just forget the plot, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
The facade of the house will remain the same, the new addition will follow the existing property as far as clapboard or shingles and whatever.
So right now, we're cedar shake shingles and clapboard on the existing house, we were looking at siding for the garage and then we'd be wrapping the whole house in the siding. As a part of it, because they had woodpeckers have gone in there and closed them damage, like we had carpenter ants, like, so we've been clearing all this off. Probably spent about seventy thousand dollars in the three years since I've been there. I've remodeled bathrooms, I've remodeled downstairs, the kitchen, like, so.
I know, I feel your pain.
Are you adding more than one bathroom to the existing?
No, uh, just, the existing already has two bathrooms, it has one upstairs and one downstairs.
Okay.
So it's like a, just a shower stall downstairs, and then upstairs is a full tub and.
Okay. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? All right, I think we're going to take a minute and open it up to the public and see if they have anything.
Thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on behalf of this project? Would you like to step up and just say your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Suzanne Hubbs-Rowland, I live at forty-three King Street, I'm the property that's going off the bottom of the screen there.
Okay.
I am, I sit on my deck, I look out, I would be looking right into his addition, and I'm good with it. They are great neighbors. If you want to know more information about how the layout came into being, I've lived in the house since nineteen eighty-one and I saw that go up, so. And yeah, that cow path, that's on the, on my plot thing too, and literally was to bring the cows into what is the back, which probably didn't have as many trees in a different century.
Right.
So they might have taken the cattle there, so. But, yeah, it's, I'm good with it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for stepping up.
That helps, thank you very much.
Yes. H U B S C H W E R L I N. Yes, thank you.
I see what you need, that's fine. Say that three times real fast. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this project? All right, at this time, I'm going to close it and take it back to the board.
You know, we, we, should I ask, do you guys have any questions at all?
I just want to thank Mr. Brace for his service to the country.
Oh.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Just figured you guys are here, so.
Yeah, thank you.
One-stop shopping?
It's, uh, it, it, once again, in an older town as, as Abington is, we, we did allow a lot of weird building.
Yeah.
A long time ago. And we can constantly run up against this in, in the twenty-twenty-threes of our life, where we look at a piece of property and go, why the, would you ever put a piece of house that close to the property line? But, that being said, and in the neighborhood, I actually have driven by the neighborhood, I don't, what he's asking for is not an overage of what I would feel would, would bother a neighbor or anything else and would be in the tolerance of the neighborhood as far as my personal opinion is concerned. And, again, the only, only thing I was, the, the two concerns I had was to make sure that the facade of the addition was going to follow the facade of the existing home. Windows, doors, you know, stuff like that, and, uh, and my only other concern was that car path, that's the first time I've run into a car path in, in my six years of doing this, where there was a car path designated on the property, because if that wasn't yours, that would really cause a problem for me. I would have made you put the thing on the other side of your house, so, that being said, I'm done.
Yeah, that would kind of, I don't know how that would work.
I don't know how it worked either, but.
Well, uh.
That's really true, like the driveway comes right up to where the handicap ramp and everything right there would be, so like, it's kind of like, we talked about what it is, I'd be having a tiny bedroom and house, and a hallway there, and then we think of all the, like, the yard, and we just, you know, it's like, we're probably looking at the outside. So right off the engine, it would be easy access.
I can say, living on Diane Circle, we had cattle behind us many years ago, before I even moved in there, so. This, this town used to be farmland, this, they used to raise cattle here and all different types of farmers and everything, yeah. That's all gone by the ways, but that's how, that's how stuff like this comes, comes in front of us. Again, my old neighbor used to say, he used to catch the cows coming into his property and put them back in where they belong, so.
I'm looking for steak now.
You got anything?
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree, seems like it fits the neighborhood, the lot, I mean, he's got all the land he needs.
Yeah.
It's just they put the, the house in the wrong spot.
Exactly.
And I mean, that weird angle, I mean, even if that house was straight on, it would be, you know.
And he does have a hardship because where the house is, if you put it on the other side, it would work out for him. Of course, it's wet, yeah, all that.
It's forest also.
Yeah.
And it's probably the, the land grade also considered.
And then with the cut of the land there too, even if you went to put it on the other side, you'd be making a weird.
And the walkway would be a major issue.
Yeah, so. We're just going over the.
There's, there's a lot of rock and, and there are on that other side too, like there comes a lot of ground.
We're just going through the cycles of.
This is the radon issue, which goes.
We, we got to go through like a list of things that qualifies you for.
And you are, you know, hitting all those.
You're hitting, you're hitting all those buttons.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I'd make a recommendation, if that's feasible to the board.
Go right ahead.
I'd like a recommendation to the approval of the petition of Jonathan C. Brace for a variance under one seventy-five dash twenty-nine for the allowing of the side setback from twenty feet to fifteen feet, and for the rear setback from thirty feet to twenty-eight feet for the proposed two-car garage with a second floor master suite attached to the existing house as submitted. The property located at thirty-nine King Street on access map fifteen, lot one eleven, in the residential zone thirty, R thirty zone. As, as with the plan submitted.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next order of business, the Town of Abington zoning mode of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August tenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven fifteen P M. At the Abington Town Offices, five hundred Glenwood Way, Abington, on the petition of Alish E. Christensen for the special permit under one seventy-five dash thirty-two I to allow for an accessory apartment in-law and for a variance under one seventy-five dash twenty-nine to allow for a side setback from twenty to sixteen. The property is located on forty-six Beaver Lane, on accessor map, on accessor map forty, sixty-four, lot eleven, in the residential R thirty zone. Is there someone here to speak on that?
Yes.
If you could just say your name and address, both of you guys, for the record.
I'm Alish Christensen, at forty-six Beaver Lane. This is my dad, he can be the builder for the project if approved. We're looking to get just an in-law apartment on the side of the house, it does overstretch the side a little bit, but the neighbor next door that would affect the most, he was fine with it, so.
It's another case where the house was set, well, if anybody would set the house that way, it's crazy.
Yeah, weird.
Oh, wow, yeah.
So you can't even put up a workable garage. We could have done it around the bath, but last year, two years ago, you spent twenty-five thousand on the pool and the deck.
You could have put a deck over the pool and just built it, and just jumped out of your bed into the.
I don't think so. No, I don't think that works that way. The only thing that I'm not liking is there's no set of plans. There really should be a stamped set of plans.
On what?
A re, a, a set of plans.
The architectural?
Do we have a set of plans for that?
No, we were waiting until this was approved to do that step, if we could.
But I think that we would have a problem approving it without seeing a set of plans.
But they said you could draw them.
Yeah, but they really, we really need a set of plans. Uh, that's my opinion, does the board agree?
Doesn't make it hard, just.
We didn't want to spend twenty, ten thousand dollars on a set of plans to say no, you know.
I do understand that, but it's hard for us to vision exactly what you're building here and how high it's going to be and what it's going to look like.
It's going to be the same height and the same look as the house is there now. It's going to be sided just the way it is, the only reason, my other daughter moved to Maine and we wanted her to come back home, so this doesn't exceed nine hundred feet of in-law space. And I put the second floor on the house for her bedroom and storage, we're going to take the attic out so the house doesn't go too high. And try to apply it with everything the way it's supposed to be. But those plans are, measurements on the plot plan says exactly where it's going to be and what it's going to be. And I figured I'd turn in the plans when I applied for a building permit.
I thought there was a requirement for us to approve anything. Hasn't that changed?
It hasn't changed, it's, um, what the applicant submitted was, um, plans drawn by him. And it's to, you know, it's not for me to deny, deny the application, it's for the board to decide whether or not the board would like this to continue for another month and see better submitted plans.
I, I really.
Than the vote as is, that, that's completely up to the board.
I mean, uh, it's up to, up to you guys, but, what do you guys think?
Yeah, it's definitely hard with just this hand drawing.
Your second floor on the main house and the first and second floor on the side addition, the fourteen feet.
Yeah. So both levels of the addition will be the in-law?
Yes.
Okay.
That's four hundred, nine hundred and forty-eight feet combined. I mean, eight hundred and forty.
Yeah, it was under the nine.
Yeah, it's under the nine, nine, it's under fifty feet under the nine.
Okay, it's not, it's not, uh, any bigger than the house existing, existing, correct? It's.
Perfect.
It's, it's, square footage is not more than the house that exists right now.
No.
No.
So you, you, you're putting like a third floor on, correct, is that what I'm seeing from this picture?
No, it's a, it's a raised ranch, so it's a sunken first level. And then the, the first, second level is up like six feet, and then the second floor. The house doesn't have a second floor. It's basically a cellar and a first floor, right now.
Because this picture just isn't, it doesn't give it justice.
The only addition to the existing house now would be.
Is off to the side, correct, fourteen feet.
Yeah, and the top would just be dormers, it wouldn't be raising it any, we're just cutting off the attic and adding dormers.
I mean, you're hitting all the criterias, but still, I think, I think that we'd want, I don't know, you guys tell me.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of think.
Well, the instructions said we could draw it, so I drew it the best I could, and we're going to make the floors equal, so nothing's off-center and nothing's higher than the other, there's no step up or down to get into the in-law apartment.
If you guys feel comfortable with this, which, you tell me.
And the plans will be detailed because it's harder to build on a raised ranch, have to stabilize the front.
Yeah.
So we have to have an engineer and plans drawn.
So it does, it does come out a little further than the actual house, the original house.
The addition does.
Thirty-two.
Because we had to bring it forward so it wouldn't be
So it's.
Less than ten feet.
So it's ten feet, ten feet longer than the original house.
Six.
Thirty-two, twenty-two.
Twenty-four, as the second floor is twenty-four, the foundation's twenty-two.
Oh, okay. See, that's the unfortunate part of not having, do they just look the same?
First floor, okay.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is the first. Foundation. First floor.
I was going to try to set the second floor in two feet, so it'd be twenty-two by forty-two. But doing that, you have to stabilize in the house and make a wall going down, and that's more work. And it only saves eight hundred dollars and it's not worth it.
Yeah. Would you guys be opposed to submitting actual stamped drawings?
I mean, you're hitting all the criterias, I'm not saying no, but we'd like to see the actual plans doing, just like the gentleman before you showed his plans. We feel better about it, making sure that everything is lined up, the way we're, the way we're seeing it.
Like, I wanted to do this for the building department, the building department would oppose it or just, you know, count it out or approve it. Can it be approved upon a contingency of the building department approving the plan? So we don't have to, because I'd like to start this in October, so we're tight to the weather by January, winter. And if I have to do the plans now, engineers and architects are so damn busy, it's crazy, so I'd like to get things rolling, so.
I, I don't know about that.
Yeah, I mean, as it stands, I would have to deny it and send them back here, so. Whether you're going to go for with the project or, or for this approval, you're going to need the plans regardless.
Yeah.
You know? And that's what I would suggest.
Is it worth getting the plans, I guess is what we're looking for?
We, we need to see the plans, yes, we, we need to see the plans and.
Yeah, I mean, the board's stipulating that you're meeting a lot of criteria.
Yes, you are, but we want to see the plans.
You want to get a set of plans for.
Instead of, because it is a, you know, we just want to see it, the plans, all right?
For instance, you have.
Before we approve it.
This picture here.
If we approve it.
I would assume that it's a full third floor on, right?
Right.
Backing up here, it shows that it's formed up. Backing up here, it shows that it's long enough. So this stuff has to be kind of clear and it's most certainly has to be clear when it comes through the building department.
Yes.
But I understand your concern is coming to mind, but as I said, it may require regardless.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Now, the folks here for their approval, they're going to require it too.
That's why we were going for the in-law apartment and the variance on the sideline. And then I thought we had to deal with the building.
The zoning board has a right to see what is going to be built. And, but as taking in the application, it is not my place to prevent the applicant from submitting what he, she, or they want to submit. So that would be at the discretion of the board, whether they found this acceptable or not.
Correct.
Um, it would not be for me to take in an application timestamp it and then say, oh, by the way, you're going to have to wait because, you know, it's not acceptable. It was submitted timely and from there they, um, you know, met the criteria to see the board.
What do you think, Mr. Chairman?
Well, like we've all said, I think we like what we're seeing so far, but I think we're going to need to see the plans before we can approve it. It sounds like the building department's on the same wavelength, so no matter what, the building, you know, they're, they're going to have to be drawn up. So I think it might be in your best interest to seek a continuance and, you know, submit the plans.
It's up to you, fully up to you to do that.
It would just make it easier, easy for us to make a decision.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Nothing we can do, that's it.
So what's the, the next?
Do I have to apply for another meeting or?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Say that again?
We're going to open it to the floor for a second in case. Real quickly, before we do anything, we'll just open it to the floor, make sure there's no one here to speak on it.
Yeah.
And then we'll have you come back up for a second. That's all right. You can actually just stand right there. Is there anyone else here to speak on this project? All right, so there's no one else here to speak on the project, so our next meeting is September 14th. Yeah, there is September 14th. Would you like to request a continuance to September 14th?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the continuance to.
Can you mention the town engineer?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there a town engineer? Okay, because I heard someone say the town engineer, I said, I couldn't find one.
Okay, so we see your next meeting then?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the inconvenience.
Does they have to sign any papers or anything, are they good?
No.
Okay.
Um, we'll be still fine even with the, the variance is the title warrant, 100 days from the time it's stamped, but we should still be good for two, um, public hearing notices.
Yeah, I just, I just want to see what they got. I mean, it's, uh, it is a special permit and a variance, I want to see what it is.
I agree, I, when I got them, I went.
Yeah, it's definitely confusing with the drawing.
Well, we figured it out, so we'll move on.
All right. Hold on for a second. All right. Move on to our next order of business. Town of Abington zoning vote of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 10th, 2023 at 7:20 PM at the Abington Town Office's 500 Glenwood Way, on the petition of Stacy H. Smith, trustee of the Stacy Ann Smith Living Trust for a variance under 175-29 to allow a front setback of from 35 to 17 for a proposed addition of the front porch to measure 28 feet long, 6 feet 3 inches deep, uh, as submitted to the property, located at 78 Doris Drive on Assessor's Map 4, Lot 171 in the residential 30R 30 zone. Is there anyone here to speak on this project? If you could come up and say your name and your address and tell us a little bit about the project.
Hi, my name is Stacy Smith. I live at 78 Doris Drive. So the project already kind of began. Long story short, my brother came in from New York and my foster brother came in from Maine and, uh, they were helping me get this done because it was just way too expensive to get everybody else. My brother's a project manager, my foster brother is a builder. And unbeknownst to me, Juneteenth is not only the, uh, end of slavery, but it's my half-birthday. And, um, it's my 10-year anniversary of my mother's passing. So this whole past year, I threw all my siblings a half-birthday and they were trying to reciprocate and have it done on that Monday. And on the 15th, they, they shut down, um, the building. So we had it on birthday anyway, but, uh, um, yeah, so we're trying to put on a board.
So did you submit a?
I didn't do anything.
So you didn't do?
They came in and.
So you just started building?
They kind of gun, we didn't put it past. So like I measured it not to go past my front steps because I figured that was where my steps, you know, ended. I'm not surpassing anything. So it was built for 6 feet 3 inches because that's where the steps are. So it could come to find that that's not the way this all works.
Yeah, definitely.
I do a picture of what it looked like finished.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. How far into it are you?
So we would have been done in those few days.
Well, yeah, definitely, but I mean, what, what do you have?
Built, we dug the whole, this like, you know, we could, you can show that it was dug deep enough and the footings are appropriate and they're both builders.
Yeah, so did you guys call it dig-safe and everything?
Say again?
Did you guys call it dig-safe and everything before you started?
We've done dig-safe for Redding, we have all the markers there because we just did.
Before you dug?
This one?
Yeah.
No, but we did it for all the other, the project of the fence. So we had a fence put in and dig-safe came because, um, Carl Harvey came and we were going to put on an addition, which was like $50,000 and I couldn't afford that because we did all the paperwork on that and dig-safe came for that.
Yeah, so you had the markings on the front of the house before they dug under?
Yeah. You could see the change, the, where I crossed out where the addition was going to be?
Mm-hmm.
Trying to see how we can do a variance on this one, I mean.
Say again?
I'm looking at that, I don't, I don't see how it qualifies for a variance.
Yeah.
So my neighbors across the street, they have, both have front porches that are much closer to the, the road than mine, mine is. And I've driven around the neighborhood and people have closed front porches within feet of their, of the street.
So you're in violation, you didn't have a permit and you're 17 feet off the street?
Well, it would be, right. Probably a little bit more.
And the old porch is 23, is that what I'm saying?
No, the old.
Was it just steps or a porch?
No, there's a porch.
The steps?
See where it says, um.
Oh, I see the steps.
Yeah, entering driveway and then it has steps coming out of it. So they, like, there was a porch already there and then steps and then, yeah.
But that goes in and the new porch comes out?
Right, and then my front steps, it, it goes as far as my.
Oh, with the front steps?
Steps.
The front steps.
That I made sure that it didn't go, you know, any past that.
So.
I like sitting out, I mean, every day I sit on my front porch, front step and I have my coffee. I want to sit on my front porch and have my coffee, talk to people, as opposed to sitting in the back.
So does this porch, is that six foot, just the top step or is that all the steps? Is that six foot three?
Six, it goes to these, so I walk over to it. So, um, this is my front door right there and those were the steps.
Yeah.
So I made it go right to the end of my steps, so I wouldn't.
So then do you have steps coming off the front of the porch again?
No, it's only this, these distinct steps that are here. So it all, yeah, here you can walk out your front door and I can walk through here and then I can sit, you know, on my swing right here.
So there's no access to the front door then?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's no, you have to go along the front of the house?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't, I never used that door anyway because we had a couch in front of the door, you know.
You know, I'm just, I'm wondering for like if there would be, because then it would be further if there was a set of steps on in front of it. It'd be more than that.
I don't, I don't need the steps.
So I wouldn't call that a, I would call that non-conforming lot, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we got that, right?
Yeah.
But so are three other conditions?
A little wet. And hardship.
Similar, similar houses on the street have pretty much what she's doing.
Correct, no building permit though?
No. And then.
Does the building inspector want to chime in on this or?
On the building end, obviously we've got some concerns with no building permit and hasn't been any scheduled inspections thus far that I know of since we've issued the stop work order.
So we dug the holes and put them, it's left open, we have pictures.
I definitely think that should be scheduled and a site visit should be conducted over there. On this picture here, where the deck is, is that your only means of egress in the front of the house? Or do you have a secondary, uh, front egress?
I have two front doors.
Okay.
So there are.
So you do have a second egress for that front?
Right, there's two front doors.
And you have an egress in the back?
And there's a back and then the basement.
You have an open front and rear egress currently existing.
Right off the deck, so like you can go straight through off to the deck.
So I think this is, yeah.
Yeah, that matches the six feet.
Yeah, there it is right there. So did you get that or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got that, yeah, I saw that, the two doors.
Non-conforming. And use of hardship as well?
There was four conditions, I believe, for hardship. The condition of the level land itself, uh, you know, impervious water, uh, rock, uh, stuff like that. We, we have hardship, um, we have, um. I'm trying to find the other two. I know, I apologize. Is this the only site plan you have? You don't, nothing's been certified, is that who did the measurements? I'm sorry? No, who did the measurements, the existing measurements that are written on there?
I did.
Where did you just find the measurement from?
82D.
The curve or did you go in? Did property, yeah, did.
Oh, I took his, so Carl Garvey did the drawings. I took his drawings and where he measured from, I measured just off the house and then I subtracted from his measurement.
Your property line marker?
Well, he gave me this draw, it has all of his, I don't know what, but this is not the big map that Carl certified? Is this the big map?
This is it, yes.
So Carl Garvey gave me the exact measurements that probably he painted right there. So I just subtracted 23 and took a little more, so it's not a bite, so probably 17.5, but.
No, I'm just asking for just for general knowledge, so the, the proposed deck there, and that's to be held, is coming up?
Yeah, thank you.
285, 23, just to the end of the steps.
I want to make sure that we hit all of them.
Existing steps for the main front door.
So, so the edge of that comes and mirrors up at the lowest steer on these existing steps?
Correct.
Do they connect or is it shut off there, kind of design plan?
It's all red, frames around it.
Financial.
And then it's, yeah, so there's no more steps. Shut off right there.
So you put it is connected to the two?
It, it is, you mean.
Your existing, uh, landing there, is it connected to that proposed?
It's over it, it goes right over it. You just frame the rounds, that's the next steps.
I'm just trying to picture it in my head.
I have a real, there's a real picture.
I would say, you know, I mean, that's a perfect stamp law.
Is that here?
That's, that's, that's my, this is the real steps right here.
Yeah.
That's what we, right, these steps are still the same steps.
All right, but these will, it shows here that would connect?
It does connect, it cuts out, comes out a couple of feet and then it continues here. This was the deck that was already there.
So you have a minimum clearance at this corner right here where those two connect?
It's lost, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm just trying to get at. I don't have those measurements to look at.
Yeah.
But you need 36 inches worth of going through here.
Right. At this point.
That would be our only concern.
Sort of, eh. Do you want to go with this? Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Sometimes it's hard to look at. I should have it right in the front of the book, I complete, sometimes I forget to put it there.
Where is, where are the sheets? Did you do the sheets?
What sheets?
The two sheets I gave you.
Oh, they have.
Bob's gonna have.
I was just saying, I couldn't find the name.
What I'll do is make sure that, you know, you have the used variance in the four parts.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing was, usually this is my book right in the front.
It's, uh, in my zone, in like R5 section.
I usually keep it right in the front and it must have misplaced it.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, although I would have liked to have had this done up front the way it was supposed to be, I don't believe, um, in the neighborhood, it's, it's, anything other than what other neighbors on the property already have existing. I am concerned that, uh, pre-building has already occurred and I don't know what, when the building inspector is notified and checks it out, whether the validation of what they've done actually even meets the standard by which we would have granted improvement in the first place. But when we, when we ask for a variance, we have certain responsibilities to the town to set. And, um, the characteristic, the size and shape of the lot, um, we have financial evidence of hardship, um, we also have, uh, the character of the neighborhood, which I don't believe is being referred of. And I don't believe this is created by the owner of the property. I believe it just has to do with the property as it exists today. But I have a bigger concern, uh, granting the variance without knowing that what work was done. I guess I have this question, Mary, and i- if the board was to grant this, would I still, would we still require the building inspector to, to be alerted, notified and do a physical check before we go forward with anything else that's, that's, the pre-existing work that's been done needs to be approved?
I would ask that would be a contingency if you do agree on it that a site visit is conducted and all inspection.
May, it's going to be done before we go forward with anything else.
Just to confirm what's being proposed as well.
Okay.
And the applicant would have to apply for a building permit and meet all the criteria that we, we have, you know.
Right.
What's existing. I, I have gone out there and I have seen the, um, existing illegal work and what, um, what Ms. Smith is, um, describing is exactly what is there. My only, my only concern is that, um, if the board would like to address that this not be a covered area, that it remains open, that might be a situation you might want to address now where that if it's covered, it brings up a different situation.
It's also, if you covered it, you would change the building standards by which it was built.
Exactly.
So we wouldn't want to, to.
But in looking at it, uh, with the building inspector called Sparrow when we went out there, Ms. Smith did not encroach any further than the front steps from the, um, from what was the existing landing. Um, she did move it just straight across towards the left. From a building standpoint, that would be for Commissioner Harris to look at the footings and, um, and Inspector Sparrow to ensure that, you know, all the holes were dug safely and consistent and met the minimum requirements of the state building code.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, permit requirement is the first, you know, I think the most important thing is a permit is requested. Number two, right after the permit is requested, that an inspection be done on the property to validate what has been done already to make sure there's no violations to the existing addition that has been proposed.
And Ms. Smith can validate that she has not touched the, um, any, any part of it as of, you know, from the time she got the stop work notice?
Another nail had been cut.
Okay.
That we will not allow any roofing to be.
You can see, there's no decking on it, you can see.
I, I, I understand that. My, my biggest concern is for the safety of the public and the use of the deck. And so I'm just trying to mandate, I'm just trying to not mandate, I'm just trying to say to you, the requirements for us to go forward and actually grant this, uh, is that you need to file for a permit. As soon as that permit's received, I am, I am requesting a, a building inspector to do a formal inspection of the work that has been done. As soon as that permit's received, I am, I am requesting a, a building inspector to do a formal inspection of the work that has been done, and to make sure that, uh, any set of plans required, or anything that he needs for, or he or she needs for approval, is provided to the building department, so that that can go forward. That we will, we will probably add to our decision that no roof will be allowed to this addition that, that has been, is being requested. And that based on the requirements of a ver, use variance, um, I feel that we could, uh, or I feel, and I'm only speaking for myself, that I can validate that the requirements for the use variance...
For the variance, yeah.
Can be, can be met, so that I think, uh, based on what I see, what was given to me, that I would be willing to go forward on that basis, with those requirements built into the, any decision we make.
Well, did, did you, did you want to have the building inspector do, do that first, before we, um, accept the variance? Or do you want to accept the variance, maybe, and then have the building inspector inspect?
My preference would be that, that we had a continuation till next month, that a building permit was submitted, that an inspection would be done, and then that inspection would come back in September and tell me that things were kosher, based on what has been proposed, but I'm not quite sure.
Is that how it would work?
The reason why I'm frowning is because if she does apply for a building permit, um, we'd have to be denied, because it doesn't have variance.
Okay, no, that's why we're asking this question. No, that's why we're asking this question, yeah, right, yeah.
What, what can be, if, if, if the, if the board doesn't mind me recommending, um, if the board does decide to vote and move forward with this, um, there is a, after the decision letter's done in this timestamp with the town clerk, there's a twenty-day appeal period. During that twenty-day appeal period, if you'd like the building commissioner or inspector to go out there to, um, review the situation out there, then that way, the application after the twenty-day appeal period, and Ms. Smith goes to registry deeds and records the document, then the application will actually be more, uh, will be, you know...
Solidified.
Solidified, and it, there should not be anything missing from the application.
And does the building inspector agree with that?
I do, and I was going to actually suggest that, that, you know, there is a twenty-day appeal period, so within that time, provided that we, it gets, uh, scheduled, and we do the inspections, and everything's good, you know, administratively wise.
Ms. Smith, do you, do you agree with that? That way it's not a waste of time, and then when you are ready to apply, you will be applying for everything, and not missing any, anything at the application time?
So I come tomorrow here, and I start?
The decision, no, the, until the decision letter's done in timestamp with the town clerk, that's when the twenty days commences. But during the time... Okay, so aft, if the board votes in, in favor, that there's a twenty-day appeal period where, when the town clerk gets the decision letter by the zoning board, um, and the city assistant, then, um, twenty days, anybody gets to appeal, like, anyone gets to appeal the other applications. So, so you're on hold for twenty days, and then after that, you get a letter from the, um, from the town clerk saying, the twenty days has lapsed. You take that, take that to the registry of deeds, and you record this, but during that twenty days, which, in my opinion, I don't think there will be any, any issues, um, then the building commissioner or the building inspector can come out there to assess the situation. So when we can apply for the permit, it will be in its entirety.
So Paul will come first, do the inspection?
Correct.
Pass it, hopefully, then I apply.
Well, not pass it, so much as that's what you're going to include in your application, the work you did, and then the work you still have to do.
Then I apply for the permit.
Correct. Okay?
So, so again, we just want to get our ducks in a row here, you know, make sure everything is good with the building inspector. Make sure the board is satisfied with, um...
And then I come back again here?
We do now know that as of this time, that's up to Ford.
We should probably take a minute and open it to the public, before we continue on. Be mindful, it's Holden's, hold on for a second. Anyone in, uh, like to speak on this? Close it, bring it back to the board. What do you guys think?
Well, I, I feel a little better, and I do think there are, like you said, I look at the property, the neighborhood, I look at that, I see what they're, what she's asking for.
Yeah. It's not crazy.
Hardship, I don't know, I mean, it's basically...
That's the one.
Small lot, it's a small lot, I mean, um, um, it's not asking for too much, it's already built, um... Again.
It wasn't...
It's not something that would not go with the neighborhood, okay? That's what I'm thinking. And the building inspector's willing to make sure everything's correct?
Yeah, I mean, what's done is done. My personal opinion to this, I don't, you know, building code-wise, it has to be followed, right? And there's some, there's a good show of leniency going on here, I, I mean, just so you understand, if the board decides to deny this, I'd have no other alternative but to order you to remove it, right? So it's kind of a big deal, it's already been done, the process hasn't been followed correctly from the beginning. We're willing, and we've been willing to help you out, you did the right thing, you stopped, now it's in front of the board, it's up to them. Um, so there's, there's two ways this can go. I'm good with the twenty-day appeal period. That gives us time for you to schedule your inspection, either myself, or my inspector will go over, check everything out, make sure it's okay. If there's things wrong with it, we'll obviously have to let you know that. But again, what's done is done, and, you know, it's up to you, uh, folks. We can straighten out the building department end with the property owner, so it's entirely up to you guys.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, um, back to us, guys.
Yeah.
You anything?
Um, I just, my only, again, my only concern is I wish we had gone forward the proper way, but, um, I am not one to... Based on what I see and what I know about the street, I know, um, other homes on the street look similar, and have similar design, uh, and similar limitations. Um, I believe I can argue, the argument that I could grant the variance, so, uh, but with the limitations necessary, and order for us to get our ducks in a row, to make sure it's all right. So, uh, before I, uh, before I say anything, um, I just want to go over, Marion, that, um, the, the first step in all this is granting the variance, if we allow it. Then a permit needs to be submitted, a building permit?
Um, and if you, what, what, so here...
Or an inspection, what, I'm trying to get the order by which I want to propose this.
So here are the options, the board can, one, continue this to next month.
Yeah.
Um, the board can vote on this, um, with conditions, and, um, during the twenty-day appeal period, um, the building commissioner inspector will go out within that twenty-day appeal period, assuming that she will not have anyone appealing this, um, deck, this, uh, front porch.
Yeah.
Which, in my, in my opinion, I do not foresee happening.
I agree with you.
And then during that twenty-day appeal, appeal period, we will list out the things that need to be corrected, whether their footings are in, uh, you know, aren't, aren't built correctly, and then from there, after the twenty-day appeal period is done, and, um, Ms. Smith records the, um, decision letter, that's when she will apply for the building permit in ma, in, in its entirety, detailing everything from the inspection to what she hasn't done yet.
Okay.
Certainly not your traditional way of doing it, but...
No, 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 no.
We're here.
I also want to, I also want to move forward if we possibly can.
Correct, I mean, unfortunately, the muddies, you know, the waters are muddied a little bit, but I think we can get to it.
How do we actually get to the point that it was the stop order came to be?
Occurred?
Yeah, how did you?
I received a call that there was, um, construction being done without, um, without any permits, uh, um, visible.
So is that, like, a complaint from a neighbor?
Correct.
So, there is a chance of an appeal?
Um, I, I'm, in my opinion, I do not believe so, I believe this, um, complainant just wanted, um, it to be done properly. You know?
The, the other question would be...
To brought to, to be brought to compliance, I believe that, that, in my opinion, that's what the, um, intention was.
And, and if, and if we did hold off till next month on this, what would be done in the process?
Nothing, she, she can't touch anything, there's no reason to go out there.
And there's nothing for you guys to go and look at, right?
Correct, she would still be, she would still be at a stop order.
Continues on that job, so all we can do is cite.
So there's no sense in that?
So it's like we're in a weird spot, you know?
Yeah, we're, it's really a bind, really, but, hopefully...
So if we don't approve...
I think it's circling and circling.
It, it...
Well, yeah, it's just for us, I mean, the whole point is, if you had come and just, you know, started this properly, we wouldn't be here. You know, you would have got the permit, we would have came to this, yeah, we would have came to this.
Technically, the building department can order it to be removed as of right now.
Right, yeah.
And I'm trying to, I'm trying to work with everybody to make it happen here.
Nobody wants to do that, but at the same time, we're, we're approving it ahead of time.
If we don't approve it, it has to come down.
Then it has to come down, that's what I'm saying, it becomes a...
Depending, depending your, uh, the outcome of this tomorrow, I will have no other choice but to order it to come down.
Yeah, no, that's...
And there, there is no exception to the protocol, um, from a safety standpoint. Um, what, if the board does move forward in favor of it, the building department will still hold Ms. Smith, um, to the same standards as if she didn't build it, and she will need to verify with, um, her brother or whoever, that, or those footings, if we need to see it, you need to lift it up, and we need to see it.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
That's just how it is.
At the minimum. My, my only...
At the minimum, right.
My only concern was the front egress, having, uh, a clear and use of ingress and egress to command it there.
Well, that was the question asked earlier, about the staircase that, that are gone now.
So, you know, if there was a potential issue with that section, within that twenty-day appeal that we had noticed, you can close that off for non-use to that, and still have that egress.
Right.
Or, or could they put stairs going the other way?
The other side, that's what I was thinking, too.
Right, so there are options here.
There are, there are options, and Ms. Smith will be open to it.
I was talking about stairs, I just thought I couldn't go past my...
You're not going past, you're not going even with it, you're going, you're going the other way. You're going a different direction.
I would love that.
But, let's get past her.
Well, we're just trying to work with you, yeah, this is not what we, this is not how we're supposed to do it. It's like building a house and then coming in and asking for permits.
Doing it backwards.
It just doesn't work this way, but we're trying to be...
Appreciate it.
So, um, anything else, guys?
I just, it's such a weird spot.
We haven't all, we haven't all copied, though. I mean, it's either don't vote, deny it, and they tear it down, or approve it with conditions for the building inspector, and he, it's on his plate to...
The conditions that can be set forth is, you know, you make the motion based on the public hearing notice with the conditions that, uh, a building inspector does a pre-inspection, um, of the site, um, to ensure the building permit is, um, uh, filed for accordingly, and, and, and covering the entire aspect of the deck.
Right, and there's, there's no reason for us to continue this.
And if, and as, um, Mr. Manning said, as Mr. Manning said, he doesn't want a roof on the top of that, that is a condit, that can be a condition also. And, um, i- if an additional egress is re, um, required, um, by the building commissioner's, um, assessment of the property, then an additional, um, egress will be added for safety, you know, for egress.
It just has to meet the minimum requirements, which it does.
Okay, so we're beating this to death, so, um, we do know what we need to do, so, uh, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do we have a motion?
Oh, actually, was there any fines or anything, maybe we wouldn't give the stop?
No, there was not.
Not as of yet.
No, because Ms. Smith did what she did when she got the stop order, she left it up there, she did not touch it, or her...
No, but there won't be an adjustment for the fee, but as for violations, or is any citation sent out for this?
No, there's no need for us to continue.
I was like, the, the next...
The next step after the stop order was to come to before the board.
Yeah, okay.
And that's what she did, and, and as soon as she could get her ducks in a row to meet the, you know, the application process.
Okay.
Excuse me?
The enforcement would be the removal, and if the removal doesn't happen, then it would be fines for not removing it. So that's basically where we are.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I recommend, uh, I recommend that we approve the petition of Stacy A. Smith, trustee of the Stacy A. Smith Living Trust, for variance under one seventy-five twenty-nine to allow for the front setback of thirty-five feet to seventeen feet proposed. Addition to the front porch measuring twenty-eight feet long and six feet three, six feet three inches deep, as submitted, um, the property located Seventy-Eighth Door Strive, uh, assesses map four, lot one seventy-one, with the residential thirty, R thirty zone, with the following conditions, um, the pre-inspection is completed as soon as possible, to validate that all building permit needs are met at that time, that the filing of a building, a formal permit is, is completed and done, uh, in a timely manner, that, uh, no roof will be allowed on this addition at any point in time as part of the approval of this variance, um...
No other additions, more than nothing.
That any additional inspections will be completed in a timely manner, whenever, and as necessary by the building department, to make sure this is done correctly. I don't think I'm missing anything, am I missing anything, Marion?
Um, I do not believe so.
Again, we don't have a set of plans, so we can't go by the plans, but what you have right now is what you have, that's it. You're not gonna make it any wider, any...
Longer, bigger, deeper, higher, lower, nothing.
And this is what this variance is for, it's not for, to go there tomorrow and add something to the side, or...
So if you, if you don't mind...
As it stands right now.
If you don't mind, can I cha-change it at the, at the building fund's discretion, meeting building state code minimums?
Please, thank you very much.
Okay.
That's my, uh, suggestion.
Can we hit it off?
And again, um, if you can just correct it that the permit will be applied for after the decision letter has been recorded, after the twenty-day appeal period, just in case somebody does decide to appeal.
Okay. Uh, in addition, uh, the twenty-day appeal period, uh, will be initiated and is required as part of this approval process.
Yes, because we would need her decision letter recorded in order to even accept the permit, since you guys are maybe moving forward with it.
Thank you.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman, that's my recommendation.
Do we have a second?
We're not going to say anything, perfect, right on the money, okay, I, there's a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Good luck.
Good luck. And again, this isn't something we, you know, too, so...
It was attached to, uh, the last one, it's just like, it's here, well before this one was attached to.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll play a second call, make you point.
No, I guess, no, Paul's already been there once, right?
Paul's already been there once, but we didn't really go all the way up this time, it's because we are...
Praise, praise to Rick.
I have his card.
Mr. Vice Chair, I may not be here. Currently, I propose not, not to be out of the state until the fifteenth, but, uh, if that changes, I'll let you know, and let the board know. But as of right now, I plan on being out of state from the fifteenth to the thirtieth of next month.
Fifteen to the thirtieth of, of September?
September.
Okay.
All right, so, we have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.